Okay, can you, we can hear us now. Okay, great. Calling to order the Middleton Common Council. Today is October 21st. It is 7 o'clock. Requesting assistance with roll call.
Alder Schaefer.
Here.
Alder Kalish.
Here.
Mayor Kuhn.
Here.
Alder Nelson.
Here.
Alder Myers.
Present.
Here.
Alder Lorman.
Here.
Alder Crowe.
Here.
Moving on to public hearings. Oh, sorry. Can we pull the proclamation up above public comments or do we have to start with public comments?
You can, but if there's no objection to the body, you can move that one first.
If there's no objection, we'll move it up for the proclamation for the firefighters. Okay, hearing none. I'm going to, to the proclamation honoring Assistant Fire Chief Gary Gilitzer as First Responder of the Year and asking Alder Kalish to present.
All right, whereas Assistant Chief Gary Gilitzer has honorably served the Middleton Fire District for 41 years, demonstrating exceptional leadership, integrity, and dedication to the safety and well-being of more than 35,000 residents within the district. And whereas through his tireless work ethic and positive attitude, Assistant Chief Gilitzer has earned the respect and admiration of his colleagues, mentoring generations of firefighters and setting the standard for excellence in public service. And whereas he has played a vital role in advancing the Middleton Fire District's readiness, efficiency, and professionalism through continuous training, innovation, and collaboration across local and regional emergency response networks. And whereas his contributions extend beyond Middleton, serving as a state emergency services fire instructor and emergency vehicle master mechanic, where he has trained and inspired countless first responders, first responders across Wisconsin. And whereas Assistant Chief Gary Gilitzer has been recognized at the Wisconsin State Capitol by Representative Alex Showers as the First Responder of the Year for the 81st Assembly District, a distinction that reflects his extraordinary impact and lifelong commitment to service. Now therefore, Emily Kuhn, mayor of the city of Middleton, do hereby proclaim our deepest appreciation and congratulations to Assistant Chief Gary Gilitzer for his outstanding service, leadership, and unwavering dedication to the Middleton Fire District and the greater community. This proclamation was adopted at a regular meeting of the Middleton Common Council on this 21st day of October 2025.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Carl will make that motion. Schaefer will second.
Thank you. Any comments? Congratulations, sir. Really proud of you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. And I ask the firefighters and our honorary to come to the forefront. All right, we're going to continue with the proclamations. I realize it's a little out of order, so thank you for your patience. Moving next to the proclamation White Cane Safety Day presented by Alder Haniro.
Thank you. Proclamation proclaiming White Cane Safety Day. Whereas on October 6th, 1964, the United States Congress designated October 15th of each year as White Cane Safety Day. And whereas blindness and severe visual impairment affect approximately 109,000 Wisconsin residents. And whereas the majority of these people use travel aids such as a white cane or a service animal to get around public streets and sidewalks and places of public accommodation. And whereas these travel aids are universally recognized as symbols representing vision loss. And whereas Wisconsin's White Cane Law requires that motorists come to a complete stop before approaching closer than 10 feet to a pedestrian who is using a white cane or service animal. And whereas greater awareness of the White Cane Law leads to safer, more attentive driving in general, enhancing the safety of all pedestrians, including children, elders, and people with disabilities. And whereas communities have the opportunity to implement many proven features to enhance the safety of all pedestrians, including sidewalks, accessible pedestrian signals, and curb ramps. Now therefore be it resolved that the city of Middleton and Mayor Kuhn does hereby proclaim October 15th, 2025 as White Cane Safety Day and also acknowledge the importance of pedestrian safety all year round. This proclamation was adopted at a regular meeting of the Middleton Common Council on this 21st day of October 2025.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I move approval.
Myers, second.
Any comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the proclamation, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. And I think we may have our constituent who requested it, so please come to the front. We, we appreciate when people care about the walking safely all across the city and glad that that was brought forward as it protects all of our pedestrians. So thank you for reading that, Alder Haniro. All right, last is the proclamation for National Friends of the Library Week 2025. Alder Crowe.
It's proclamation honoring Friends of the Middleton Public Library on Friends of the Library Week, October 2025. Whereas October 19th through 25th, 2025, has been designated as the 20th Annual Nationwide Celebration of Friends of the Library Groups. And whereas the Friends of the Middleton Public Library is a dedicated group of volunteers who advocate for quality library services, resources, and programs that enrich the lives of all community members. And whereas in 2025, the Friends contributed nearly $30,000 to enhance library programming, services, and community engagement, directly benefiting residents of all ages. And whereas the Friends volunteer countless hours to support library initiatives, raise funds, and sponsor programs that promote literacy, lifelong learning, and civic connection. And whereas the Friends of the Middleton Public Library exemplify civic pride, generosity, and partnership, strengthening not only the library but the entire Middleton community. Now therefore Emily Kuhn, mayor of the city of Middleton, does hereby proclaim the week of October 19th through 25th, 2025 as Friends of the Library Week in the city of Middleton and encourages all residents to join in expressing their gratitude to the Friends of the Middleton Public Library for their outstanding and steadfast support. This proclamation was adopted at a regular meeting of the Middleton Common Council on this 21st day of October 2025.
Thank you so much, Alder Crowe. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Lorman will second.
Any comments? I know we all love our libraries, so thank you for all that you do. All those in favor of approving the proclamation, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. And do you guys need a picture? Okay, fantastic. Come to the front. All right, moving on to public comments.
So, public comments, just a reminder, you have three minutes to speak. The item that you want to talk about does not have to be on the agenda, but I would request that you give us your name and address at the beginning of your time. First up is Kevin Spitler.
Good evening. My name is Kevin Spitler. I live at 6848 Frank Lloyd Wright Avenue in Middleton. And this evening I'm speaking in support of the Planning and Development Department's top priority in the 2026 budget for a strategic city climate action roadmap. Sustainability Coordinator Kelly Hilliard has mentioned the importance of such a plan several times recently, but its funding was in some jeopardy until maybe just the past meeting. Hopefully it's been added back in. At the budget meeting on September 30th, Kelly stated that for the city to reach its renewable energy and climate-related goals, there's a pressing need for the climate roadmap, which requires broad expertise in local policies, technologies, project development, and detailed knowledge of financial planning, available grants, lifecycle analysis, and design engineering. City staff does not have this range of expertise nor the available resources to dedicate to such a project. Kelly has stated that this plan will help us minimize cost and maximize value and know-how to stage capital projects for the next 10 years. I would add, without it, Middleton is left with an inefficient and more costly piece-by-piece approach that will not meet our needs and timeframe. A decarbonization roadmap similar to the one done for the Middleton Cross Plains Area School District would include a long-term capital improvement plan that provides detailed analysis of all city assets and equipment to create a replacement plan consistent with our sustainable purchasing policy. It also includes a decarbonization strategy and timelines for specific actions to get our 100% goals for energy and emissions on schedule, as well as a cost-benefit analysis that includes both benefits of decarbonization. It will identify various financial strategies to fund upgrades and renewable energy efforts that will save operational dollars. As a member of the Community Campus Committee, the timing is also right for this comprehensive study as we look to replace or renovate city buildings consistent with our energy goals. And much of the information from this plan can be fed into that process. So thank you for this opportunity to address the council and for your contributions to our city.
Thank you, Kevin. Next up is David Bell.
Hello, my name is David Bell. I live at 1625 Middleton Street. Lived here for over 40 years. I'm here to speak of and support of our wonderful Middleton Senior Center, which provides many significant and valuable programs to senior citizens here. But specifically, I want to say a few words about one program that I'm a volunteer for, and that's the RSVP Driver Program. The acronym is for Retired Senior Volunteer Program. Where retired seniors that help people get to appointments. Sometimes we just take them to the Civic Center to enjoy programs, presentations, or whatever. And I've been doing it for about a couple of years now. And I meet so many wonderful people and have great conversations. And no one's ever been much of a dud. It's been really great that way. And it's, it's a, it's a multitask thing. We're helping, we're providing not just a ride from point A to point B. We provide conversation, our concern, and support for people who, you know, may have problems getting out, may have problems getting around. So we're there non-judgmentally and just help people and expose them to the Senior Center and all the resources that they can encounter once they get over the door. And I'm proud to be a part of it and just want to let people know there are many, many things going on at that Senior Center. And little by little, you're going to find out about all of them. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak tonight? Is there anyone online? All right, thank you. That concludes public comments.
Moving on to public hearings.
Since this item is noted at 7:30 on the agenda, let's hold off on this one until we get to that appointed time so we can come back to it.
Oh, my apologies. Thank you for saying, for noting that.
Oh, sure. You got it.
Okay, moving on to the approval of the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
First, I think we need to pull item number three.
Very good. Thank you. Great catch. Anything else? All right, is that a motion to approve consent agenda items one, two, and four? Oh, wait. Four, five, six, seven.
Sure, I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
Myers, second.
Great. Any comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving consent agenda items one, two, four, five, and six, seven, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number three, I presume we will hold until after the 7:30. Great. Thank you. And moving on to ordinance's first reading. Ordinance to amend section 15.103 to prohibit left turns except school buses from Cromery Middle School onto Donna Drive. Is there a motion?
Myers, on behalf of Public Works.
And I'll second on behalf of retired school drop bus drivers.
I love that energy. Any comments? And just confirming with staff that our school district is fully aware and supportive. Fantastic. All those in favor of approving the ordinance to amend section 15.103 to prohibit left turns except school buses into Cromery Middle School, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Number two, ordinance to amend section 2.35 of the Middleton Municipal Code related to rehabilitation standards and demolition of structures in historic districts not designated at a landmark. Is there a motion?
Myers, on behalf of landmarks and license and ordinance, I move approval of this ordinance to amend section 235 of the Middleton Municipal Code related to rehabilitation standards and demolition of structures in historic district not designated at, as a landmark, or not designated a landmark. If you have any questions, this was discussed ad nauseam at the Landmarks Commission over the past year. I am happy to answer them to the extent that I'm able. And Matt has also been over this a few times. So I'm sure he will also be happy to answer the questions.
Is there a second?
This is an Iro, I'll second.
Any comments or questions for our?
Correction on a typo on section 7A. The word wood is repeated twice.
Duly noted. Thank you for that editing update. I'm sure we will, we will fix that. Any other comments or, or questions? Hearing none. All, very good job.
No, I was just giving John a thumbs up. I had it flagged in my notes.
One anal retentive to another.
All right. See, you would just have support, sir. All those in favor of approving the ordinance to amend section 2.35 related to rehabilitation standards and demolition of structures in historic district not designated as a landmark, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Third, ordinance to amend section 15.11 of the city of Middleton Municipal Code to amend one-way traffic locations. I think I asked for a map if, if, if we're available. I just want to see it, you know, for, for feedback. So if we can have staff come to the front, much appreciated. Is there a motion?
Move to suspend the rules?
Is there a second to that motion?
Myers, second.
Any comments on that? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving to suspend the rules on this, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Returning to the topic of discussion, please share.
This is my, this is District 6, correct? And I'm just curious, has Hackberry Lane, when I saw that, I had no idea what that was. Has it been incorrect this whole time?
Yeah, so it's been incorrect this whole time. This is Luke Malatik, city engineer. This is actually a request from the PD. They noticed this in the ordinance. Really, it's just as simple as stating the wrong road in the ordinance, so.
I appreciate that update because Alder Haniro, I had the same thought. I wasn't quite sure. So I appreciate that explanation. Alder Myers?
And this is a bit of historic context for this. There is a Hackberry Court in the town of Middleton, which is likely why at some point when we were, when the subdivision was being built for public safety reasons, the name would have been changed. In all likelihood, at some stage when someone realized that there was a duplicative name so close by for emergency response reasons. And that's why license and ordinance requested that we waive the readings and just get this over with.
So I will then move to approve the ordinance to amend section 1511. And that would be the second reading, final reading.
Is there a second?
Lorman will second.
Any comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the update to the Municipal Code to amend one-way traffic locations, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. And again, thank you to staff for that clarification. Resolutions 202544 approving the release of pathway easement for the Heinz Woodland Trail. Is there a motion?
Myers, on behalf of Public Works, I move approval of resolution 2025-44 to release the pathway easement for the Heinz Woodland Trail.
Is there a second?
Will second.
Any comments? Alder Haniro and then Alder Lorman.
I have two. First, I'm just wondering, this was named after someone. And I'm wondering what does the family or the sponsor of this trail have to say? Have they been consulted? I know we tried to.
It looks like our Parks Director will come to the front. I will tell you, having been the Alder woman prior to Alder Kalish, he probably knows the same thing, but the Heims Woods are throughout District 4. So it was the farmer and the mound is on the other side of the district is also named after him. So it is a name, a family name, but please take, give us the appropriate.
The, I know a little, a little bit of that history there. But it's named after the family member from Sue and Anna Case, grandfather, but Sue and Anna are here from the Middleton Shores Development. That, that easement was, was dedicated from their family and named after. But if there's more questions, they're also here for tonight.
No, thank you, Kylie. I just wanted to make sure that they're, that whoever was responsible for naming it was aware that this is happening. And then.
They've been very supportive of many things. So we're very grateful to their family.
But then the second thing is, and I see Alder Madden is unable to be here, but she had had a request at the joint meeting of the Public Works Committee and the Ped Bike and Transit Committee. The minutes say that Alder Madden said she has no objection to releasing this easement if there can be a guarantee that there will not be another path closure as part of the Middleton Shores redevelopment project. And that was not included in the resolution. So I just want that noted somewhere.
The path in front of Middleton Shores will stay open.
Right, that's what I want to have.
But I think she just wants it noted. And I will tell you that because that was part of the design, the initial design discussion, which was, you may not have been there, so.
Yep, I know Lucas here tonight, and he can speak on behalf of the Middleton Shores Development Project. I don't know that there is a guarantee that, that should be placed on this, but we can speak a little bit further.
Yeah, I don't, I, I can't really guarantee that there will be no work done in the future on the middle, on the North Mendota Trail. I don't think we have, we don't have plans for future phases of Middleton Shores yet, but I believe that their main crossing of the trail into Century Avenue is getting completed and it'll be finalized, I believe, Thursday is when they're doing the final paving. But yeah, I can't.
Are you guaranteeing that if there's construction, it might be closed for a day or two? Is that what you're worried about? Or are you thinking about in, say, 100 years? Because I, I don't, I think they're trying to give us enough space that impertuity that someday we cannot control that. But I think your goal is for the next 10 years, the next 50 years, that it will be open.
I, again, this, I'm just reading what was in the minutes, but the meeting itself, the conversation was clear that we're talking about when Middleton Shores construction is going on. That path has been closed a few times, not in connection with that, but in connection with the Century and Allen reconfiguration of the intersection and the lights. That was the concern expressed by some members of the Ped Bike and Transit Committee and Alder, Alder Madden shared that. So it's not, it's not, and maybe the minutes should be amended before they're approved. It's not that that path, North Mendota Path, has to always be there. It's during construction of the new building at Middleton Shores, something needs to be open besides the private parking lot for people to go through.
Okay, I, I think Alder Myers wants to speak to this. And then I want to turn back to Alder Lorman, who had his hand raised.
Yeah, so Kim and I discussed this during that meeting. And because she's unable to be here tonight, I did want to speak on this to discuss exactly what took place during that exchange. Because the. what took place during that exchange, because the minutes are not super clear. But when we were discussing whether or not to delay release of this easement, one consideration we were looking at was construction. And some members of the Ped Bike and Transit Committee felt very strongly that keeping this trail in place during the length of construction would provide some amount of redundancy. Kim and I both had a meeting of the minds at, if there is a way to do this easement contingency, it should be done at council in consultation with our city attorney, Matt. I emailed Matt about ideas for a contingency on the release because that's not an area of expertise that I have. But it is one that our city pays Matt to have. And Matt replied with a very long email detailing many of the ways that this was imprac, that that consideration for easement release would be impractical to write into the easement release. And how he'd arrived at that legal conclusion. I trust Matt's judgment as our attorney that if he says that that's impractical as a legal conclusion, he's, or a legal path forward, he's probably right. And Matt, if I'm misstating anything in that email.
That's a much shorter version, I guess, of what I reasoned out for you. So I, I mean, I guess if anyone has any practical or questions about that, but yeah, I just think it's hard to, you're either releasing an easement or we're not releasing an easement. And that's just a judgment call about, do, you know, are we comfortable enough that if there that there's low probability that that this will have to be closed in any time in the near future? And that if there is any short closures, we can, we can get around it versus the risks and downsides of keeping it open. And you know, I just kind of think that's, that's where we're at. It sounds like, you know, there doesn't seem to be any obvious reason why it should be closed again for the Middleton Shores construction. But you know, can't really guarantee it or reenact, reinstate the easement if it should happen. It's just something that we're going to have to deal with if it rises.
Okay, moving on to Alder Lorman.
Thank you. I'm speaking on behalf of my district, as I should as an Alder. The President of Harbor Village Homeowners Association, Pamela Costello, and a constituent, Kirsten Klockner, also a member of Ped Bike and Transit, objected to the closing of the trail until the Middleton Shores project is complete. They're concerned with the ongoing disruption with the Mendota Path specifically. So the path has been disrupted by the, that project. There was some drainage work done. There was a, some concrete work that had to be redone into a drive entrance to it. So what happens is the Mendota Trail is just shut down for a week or a few days. And then the trail, the path, I'm sorry, I keep calling it trail, but then the path is put back into service. And so what was coming out of this was two different angles. One is just the people who live in this condo association want to use, continue to use the Heinz Wood path as an alternate route. And as a member, the member of the Ped Bike and Transit, Ms. Klockner, her concerns are really the fact that every time the path gets shut down, the Mendota Path, that the city or whoever is doing the work isn't really setting up an alternate system, which we're not going to get into because you'd have to create a temporary crossing system somewhere else along Century Avenue to get across Century Avenue to get back to the path on the other side. Nonetheless, what I want to make clear is that I'm familiar with this. I've used the path many times, written it many times. I voted on August 27th at the Conservancy Lands Committee to close the path. And I reviewed the minutes from October 13th of the Joint Ped Bike and Transit Public Works Meeting. And I continue to support the decision of both committees in this. However, on behalf of my constituents, I simply will be voting no on this resolution to represent their view. So, thank you.
So I did take time to go and check the actual physical condition of the eight-inch wide strip of dirt that constitutes this path at various points, stretching for hun, about 100 feet at one point of it. There I would hesitate to even call this a path, frankly. There was a point where I was very glad that I was a sure-footed, young-ish guy because there was a three-inch drop that was obscured by leaves that were, that were there. And only about half of my foot landed where it had any support. So I have real concerns about keeping this path open for any amount of time. There are dozens of places on the trail, just this, or the path that are like that. It's not drain, the drainage is bad, which causes even more of it. Kylie can definitely walk you through more of the physical condition of it. But at this point, if we're keeping it for the purposes of accessibility and redundancy, it is neither accessible nor usable for a lot of people in its current condition. So I don't view that as a serious, serious reason to keep it unless Parks is willing to allocate, how much would it cost Kylie to completely regrade?
There, there would be grading and then also all the drainage from the parking lot would have to be redirected. And the way that all the culverts are set up or that that pattern is set up right now has to be completely removed and redone. I do not have a cost estimate on that. We'd have to put it into design and reconstruct and depending on the surface, what surface, surfacing it would be. But it would be a large sum of money that we don't have allocated in the capital budget for this project. And we also have several other paths that we would like to allocate resources to that are highly used throughout our trail network.
Thank you. That did answer my question.
Alder Hanairo.
Just one final thought is that, you know, I, I don't, I will vote yes. I appreciate Alder Lorman's position. I will be voting yes to release the, the pathway easement. I, I would look to our Public Works Department and to the developer of the new Middleton Shores building to make sure that the North Mendota Trail, if it does close for any reason, that we are implementing our complete streets policy and making sure that there is reasonable access, perhaps by putting in a protected bike lane temporarily so that cars may be inconvenienced, but pedestrians and bike riders will still have a way to get through.
Okay, this is such a robust topic.
You made your 7:30 deadline.
I know. I, I'm so excited.
That so you could do that.
Alder Kalish as the Alder and then Alder Schaefer to round us out.
Yeah, I, I think one of the take-home messages for me and, and I think for city staff is the critical importance of maintaining appropriate, open and continuous access to pheasant branch. I think you've heard that pretty resoundly here. And so as Alder Hanairo said, if, regardless of how this turns out, I mean, but if this trail is closed, you know, one of the take-home messages is to assure that the Mendota Path provides appropriate, open and continuous access to pheasant branch. And so just, you know, that's one of the key takeaways that I'm taking from this. And that's, that's from District Four as well. That resource, that amazing resource in the city of Middleton, has to, has to have appropriate access. People use it on a daily basis.
Yeah, lots of good comments. I thank you, David, for having your trials for going out on a path, which is not really a path, at least I appreciate it. I am concerned about keeping access open, although there are a lot of roads all summer long that are blocked and cars can't get through them and have to find very distant alternate routes. So I understand the dilemma too. So I'm, I'm less concerned that we somehow absolutely rigidly need to maintain access every second, every day. But I think the liability of that path, as I hear it from staff, is too much to be concerned with. So I'm going to vote yes to move this along.
Well, thank you, everyone. I really appreciate that. And if there is construction and we have to share the road, we'll be working with Ben's team to help do that. We'll make sure there's some signage. So thank you to Parks for helping us with the bike paths. But thank you to Public Works for keeping those things going forward. I'm going to circle out all those in favor of approving the resolution 202544, approving the release of pathway easement for the Heinz Woodland Trail. Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
The motion passes six to one. Is that accurate? Okay, good. Moving back to public hearings. It is past 7:30. The time is now 7:41. Hiashua Inc., Happy Walk is requesting a Class B fermented malt beverage license located at 7610 Elmwood Avenue with Kaewa Zoo, 10 Andover Circle, Madison, Wisconsin as agent. Is there anyone who is here to speak? All right, for those who've been here before, you know I have to ask two more times. Is there anyone here who is willing, is wanting to speak on this topic? Anyone here who wants to speak? Hearing none, we are closing this hearing. The time is 7:41. Moving to the, the consent agenda, item number three. Hiashua Inc., Happy Walk is requesting a Class B fermented malt beverage license located at 7610 Elmwood Avenue with Kaewa Zoo, 10 Andover Circle, Madison, Wisconsin as agent. Is there a motion?
Yeah, Schaefer moves to approve, being given my discretion.
Myers, second.
Any comments? We're always excited for our restaurants. All those in favor of approving the Hiashua Happy Walk Fermented Malt Beverage License, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right. City Administrator, I think we're moving on to discussion. Can you assist me on item number one? Update and discussion on community campus plan?
Happy to do so. So if you recall, at our August 13th committee, the whole meeting, we had provided some additional information from our consultants on kind of where things were at from just conceptual building design. But we had a number of kind of more guidance questions that we had asked council to provide some feedback on to know, you know, what, where to go with this project. Since that meeting, staff has continued to do work on this project for your direction. And we have some additional questions that we'd like some feedback and guidance if you're willing and able to give it this evening as we continue our work. So they break down in kind of three different areas. First is, as, as we talked about in the meeting on the 13th, trying to come to an understanding of what the council's level of comfort is for project scope and cost as we continue to, you know, understand what, what might be possible within funding constraints. And so we've, we've done some kind of staff work on, are there areas in the conceptual designs that have been put forward by the consultants today where we could identify areas that could be consolidated or removed to kind of free up a space in those buildings? Through that work, we've come up with to date just a little under 13,000 square feet that could possibly be taken out of those buildings, you know, through common use of space, some, some larger programming space that could be taken out. So that's just some work that we've kind of done and wanted to brief the council on that. But the larger question again kind of remains like, do you have any additional guidance for us since you've had some time to sit and think about the presentation since August on kind of the upper and lower bounds of what you're comfortable with continuing to move forward in conversation with the community if this project continues to proceed? Again, I'm not necessarily putting you on the spot to say, you know, hard and stone, but, but the more you can give us would, would really be helpful as we continue to work on this. So that's question one, and I'll pause there and I'll get your feedback on that before we move on to the other two items.
Can you repeat the question?
Yeah, so does the council have additional feedback on the project price range that the council would be comfortable with in terms of an upper and a lower bounds for the project? As you recall from our discussion in August, we presented a number of different options, each having a different price tag, depending on if it was a, just a standard retrofit option all the way to a full new construction option and some options in between with some, some hybrids. That the discussion at that meeting in August was, generally speaking, the max the council was interested in considering further was about 100,000, I'm sorry, yeah, 100 million dollars in terms of your, your upper appetite. And just wanted again to continue to get any additional feedback that you might have on that, those bounds, if you will.
Okay, so it sounds to me that our, that our high end is 100 million. It had gone all the way to 140. And at the time, we were looking at a ceiling of 100 million. And it looks like we're looking for a bottom, whether that's 50 or 60 million or that's 70, 80 million? Does anybody have thoughts on that? And I know at times Alder Kalish, and I'm sorry, I'm putting you on the spot. We had said, we really wanted to start at zero and say this is a non-option, like a no option. I do support that, but I think they're looking for a realistic ballpark area. So please leave the $0 amount there. I will continue to support that. I'm looking more ballpark range, so a bottom level. Alder Lorman?
Yeah, I mean, I have some encouraging input. I did have a listening session for my district and we, we brought this up. And what the residents basically expressed was just a general concern for, call it significant tax increase. And we didn't get into this specifics. So that leaves the door open for us as a body, I think, to figure that out. And, and they, and they acknowledge the need for a campus improvement. You know, when, when they were educated as to, you know, the age and condition of the buildings and especially City Hall. You know, so that's, I think it's encouraging in that sense that instead of being sometimes what I would say experience from constituents when it comes to spending more money just being shut down. Because that seems to be the general message I get from my district. So I think this tells me that if we want something, we have to properly, you know, educate our, our constituency and not sell them, but really educate them. I think they're capable, they're just as capable as me as making decisions because I'm one of them who now is sitting here representing them. And I wouldn't say there's anything that makes me any more special than the rest of my constituents unless you ask my mother.
Okay, so was there a bottom range for you?
No, no.
You're thinking.
So I'm just saying, you know, support is there.
Support is there. Excellent. I'm going to go Alder Schaefer and then Alder Myers. Okay, my apologies. Alder Schaefer then Alder Nelson?
Yeah, I appreciate David, your comments. And it's also, as a fundraiser many years, they say you don't ask people for money. You take the money that they already want to give you because you educate them on what you want to give them money. And it's a very, it's, it's good to hear that. You know, bottom line to me is not a dollar amount. That's sideways to do it. What we have is safety issues, issues to deal with the crumbling infrastructure, et cetera, as opposed to those things that we want as the cherries on top of the. To me, the bottom line is fixing, and whatever it takes to fix all of the things to make these buildings healthy and usable, as opposed to expanding them. I have no idea what that number is, but I think that ought to be a driving factor. Priorities should go between to what needs fixing the most. And you figure out what's the worst. And you figure out what's the worst of the worst and that gives you a floor.
I'm looking back at my notes and option two is the thirty point nine million dollars renovate the existing buildings. That doesn't give anyone any more space, which is the big need. So my proposal is that we make the bottom be somewhere around sixty million. I'm just kind of going havesies between option two and option three. And that the upper limit, I'm respectfully requesting be one-ten based on my notes from meetings in the past. Given that the upper limit, the option that I was referring was like a hundred and eighteen. So I'm not going that high.
You're giving a little on each side?
Thank you.
I like that. And I like that you're referencing two and three, so far recall.
Yeah.
And I think, I think you said, did you say sixty and one-ten?
Yeah, that was, that's my personal request.
Ceiling and floor. Thank you.
I, I was at Alder Lorman's listening session too, and the first question that came up when, when Dave mentioned the community campus was what was the need? And, and once we kind of filled in the constituent, like Alder Lorman said, they're like, oh, that makes sense. I think the bottom amount, again, like Alder Schaefer said, is what addresses the needs. If we spend fifty million dollars and it doesn't address the needs, then that's too much. If we spend a hundred million and that takes care of the needs, then that's the ideal. So I, and I kind of agree with Alder Nelson, somewhere between sixty and one-ten. Probably live with. But, but again, it has, the, I think the bottom has to be driven by can we get something for that amount?
I, I think there's a lot of wisdom there. Thank you. Alder Myers?
So I have also talked to my constituents about this and we've gone over what the needs are and what they feel the needs are. And I've heard plenty of support for a new city hall. Less, but still substantial support for a new senior center. Not a single constituent has told me we need a new library. They seem to view that more as a wants than as a need. And I understand that others feel differently. I'm not necessarily getting into, we should do building prioritization here. But I do think that it would be helpful for us to look at the buildings themselves within the confines of a facilities master plan. When we're talking about amenities instead of core city services. So that's just something I want to put out there. I have, as members of this body have suggested, told my constituents that they could cancel their internet if they wanted to, to pay the increase in their property taxes. That went, as I said, it would go in the committee of the whole meeting, very poorly. I would recommend we not use that as a talking point if we're engaging in the public. But since we're talking about the range for cost, Brian, what is the amount that we forecast to lower property taxes on average when we close our tax increment districts?
I don't have the number in front of my fingers, so I'll have to get it, get it to you guys because I don't want to misspeak and give you an incorrect number.
I, I, I can't recall it offhand, but I do think that that plus about fifteen percent makes for a reasonable lower and upper bound. Because that will actually address the concerns that my constituents have expressed to me. And the constituent who I spoke with this morning, Lou, who is a retiree living on a fixed income, said, and he insisted that I share this with all of you. Tell them Lou said, "The city is soaking the shit out of us." So I'm relaying that because I want you all to hear it because Lou wanted you all to hear it. And I understand we need to spend money to address needs, but we also need to prioritize our actual needs over the things we'd like to see in an ideal world where we have functionally unlimited money.
Going to take a pregnant pause to think about Lou. Okay. Alder Heniro?
Unlike my colleague in District Five, I have received a lot of expressions of support for a great library as a community gathering space. I have not heard specifically one way or the other about City Hall, but I do know people who use the senior center and they would enjoy a different type of facility, one that's not an old bank building with multiple levels and, and floors that change the grade at a moment's notice. I've been writing about the community campus plan for the past year. Almost every month, I think the last two, I finally was able to take a break. I'll be writing about it again in my November e-newsletter. So, so I am keeping my constituents informed. And that's where I've gotten the, the feedback. I, I don't think I have a lower bound. I appreciate Alder Crow's comments about if we spend fifty thousand and don't meet the needs, we've spent too much. I, I support that. I would note that other municipalities have done really good work and gotten beautiful buildings for between fourteen million and twenty-six million dollars, ranging from totally new construction of the Village of Windsor Municipal Building to the twenty-six million dollars being the expansion of Sun Prairie's library. And the difference is those are the final costs. The estimates we have build in over fifty percent of the cost as not construction, but other costs like the contingency and soft costs. But these estimates of fourteen million, twenty million for McFarland's Public Safety Building and twenty-six million for the Sun Prairie Library, those seem like very doable numbers. And I would hope that, you know, three times the twenty-six, seventy-eight million, eighty million, thereabouts. I would hope we could meet the needs with that amount of spending.
Yes, I, I agree with Alder Heniro and Schaefer. I, I'm not, I'm not one hundred percent supportive of a lower limit. You know, if, if the council feels that it's appropriate, I mean, I think it's all right, but I guess I, I totally understand the need and usability of an upper limit. But a lower limit, I think we need to be careful based on what Alder Heniro and Schaefer has already said is that if we set a lower limit, a contractor will come in and they will not go below that lower limit. You know, so that's one potential downfall and we may not get everything that we want. So I mean, if, if we really think that there's a dire need for a lower limit and it will help this initiative, then I think there's, that it's worth further consideration. But I'm, I'm not sure what we lose significantly if we don't have a lower limit. Because all the options are under consideration, right? Two, three, four, five. So I, I just don't want to narrow our options for the future by, by creating a somewhat ambiguous based on some data, but a, a range that may limit options in the future.
I, I fully respect that and generally I would live by that. I will tell you that I've built ten federal facilities. And the average, and this was prior to twenty-ten. So take that with a grain of salt for inflation costs. But they did average about fifteen million, some lower, some higher. So the only reason I find it to be a valuable exercise is that if you, and, and I think Alder Heniro pointed to some that are fifteen and some that are twenty-five. So I, I'm just going to go with twenty. I, I, I know you did the math, but I'm just going to go with twenty. So the reason that that was helpful is that kind of gave us, we, we knew the footprint of the land we bought. But we kind of had to know like what the staff was. But then what is that square footage and can we build out for future staff? And could we build out, you know, should we stay with one level or two? And it kind of gives you a little bit more work. So I, I'm only walking you through that concept because I didn't see the value in the first couple. But by building number eight, nine and ten, there was a reason to that exercise. And I really do appreciate Alder Heniro for stating the specifics of some local. And I know that Alder Nelson also covered that and I'll, I'll give it to you next. But I want to share that experience because it, it did help staff in my day job figure out how we move forward. And then for us, as we went to our version of an RFP, was it within a reasonable range? To make sure that those safety things were covered and that those basics. And I have to tell you, there was not one pretty facility that we built. I think someone got maroon paint. I think that was the best we did. So I, I, I will, I will tell you that I will ensure that we will be good stewards. But I, I do appreciate what you're saying and we'll keep an eye on anybody who may have misgivings as to what this might look like. Alder Nelson?
Um, I, I think Alder Heniro may have mentioned it quickly at the end of when she was speaking, but in the example of Sun Prairie's library at twenty-six million, I'm not sure if that included the soft goods. And you mentioned that that might not be part of that number, or is it?
I, I know the Village of Windsor at fourteen and a half million, that did include everything.
Okay. And so that was.
Do you mean soft goods as in internal?
Yeah, all of the, everything, rugs, blah, blah, blah.
So my math back in the day included that. So that, yes, that's why I want to clarify. We just didn't call it soft goods.
Trying to say like, if it wasn't, our numbers include all of that. Just in case we're just so we're on apples and apples.
On the same page, yeah. Much appreciated. Alder Myers?
If I'm, and Brian, this is why I asked you for that number. I couldn't recall it offhand. But I believe, based on my recollection, and Lisa, you may know this. The, the amount of increment that we will get back will result in a lowering of property taxes that is roughly in line with that seventy-two million.
Do you mean over twenty years?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, take.
In terms of the impact that it'll have on homeowner taxes that would have to go up by a corresponding amount to fund the bond issue.
Much appreciated.
So I'd be, I'd be comfortable in that range if, or I could get comfortable in that range. If that's what people want to move forward with. And I think that I could make a case to constituents based on the lack of change in the tax bill overall from the project.
And that is part of the reason we try to plan wisely and time things well. And I do say that both to the people at this table, but also to our staff who keep working with us. Alder Schaefer?
You just mentioned planning and I think that was important when I was talking about needs for critical needs as opposed to others. We've not really talked tonight at all about the idea of staging this over time. And, and instead of, you know, one bond issue, you may do one bond, another one five years later, you stagger this in such a way that it's like buying a car. It's not the fifty thousand dollars, it's only four hundred a month, you know. But I think I still want to keep that on the table, that we don't have to do this with one checkbook at once and bang, the whole thing goes up for nothing.
I appreciate that. That has been on my mind as well. So I'm open to that discussion, but I'm glad that you're bringing that back forward. Did you have, I know you had questions two and three?
Yes, thank you for the feedback you've given on this question one. If the body wants to make a motion, if you feel like there's enough, excuse me, support for a motion, that's great. If you don't feel like that's available tonight, that's fine too. I've, I've got plenty of commentary from the council on this question. And if we have further follow-up, we'll obviously be back in front of you on that. Question number two, again, keeping in mind the, the community conversation and getting the council to a position where you're ready to make a decision based on information. We, in the meeting in August, had kind of talked about a potential schedule to get you almost through twenty-twenty-six for some decision points. And we kind of spelled out on the back of this memo, kind of generally speaking, what that framework would look like in November of twenty-six. Just wanted your feedback if that is still kind of your preference is to move along that timeframe? Or if you had any other thoughts or things that we're missing in that? Just wanted to get your feedback on that piece. The way, and again, maybe just to speak more clearly on it. Our, the, the internal direction from staff, based upon our previous conversation in August, is that we would, unless told differently from the council, would push for, you know, a decision point in November of twenty-six. But just again, wanted to put that out there for council. If you had any additional feedback on that.
Alder Myers?
Yeah, so Brian, thank you for working through a sample schedule for this. I, I've given you a little bit of feedback already privately, but I do want to say it for the body as well as a few other things. First, this body at the last committee of the whole meeting determined that the information sessions would not be bilateral communication, by which I mean resident input would not impact the ultimate decision that was reached from those listening sessions. And so this body determined that they should be called information sessions instead of we're not listening sessions, which I thought was probably a good branding choice. So I want them to be referred to going forward as information sessions because they are presenting information only. Item one for October finalized key communication messages. That sounds like a campaign to me instead of a neutral presentation of facts. I want to make sure that when we are presenting this to residents, we are presenting a neutral presentation of facts instead of pushing one conclusion or another as a city. We have to be neutral going into a referendum and when we're doing certain things anyway. So it would make sense to be neutral throughout the process. I would also like to point out that we should actually be transparent about our projected costs early on in the process and frequently. That is not something that necessarily comes through. If, for instance, you have the costs and they are included in one of twenty documents totaling approximately three thousand pages and on five of those slides, you have the costs, you are not being transparent with the costs. You're being very transparent with certain other aspects of the project, which are important. But it is also important to allow residents to make a fully informed decision without reading through three thousand pages of a six-year process in order to get that information. So I would like us to include the cost ranges. that are under consideration going forward for each of the plans. I'd also like to say that if we're doing November for the initial listening session, and it is now October twenty-first, the time in between that listening session and when we would be holding it is vanishingly small, even though it does feel like a lot because, of course, we have the Thanksgiving holiday, which people will be traveling for. Sorry, I'm just rattling through these. So, I would recommend pushing that initial listening session back to early December or potentially later. I would also like for us, we have our, where do we have our? Oh, media coverage push is in spring of twenty-twenty-six. Not everyone gets city email. In fact, overwhelming majority of city residents do not receive city email. Those who do, I couldn't tell you the open rate, but I will just assume that it is industry standard for a hot list, which means that a super majority of those residents who receive city emails do not open a majority of their city emails. So, that means that absent a concerted effort to push this and push the, specifically to push the existence of this project, to push the existence of these information sessions, what we are going to bump into is, at most, universe, so, and I'm sorry I did professional communications for, it may not always seem like it with my comments at council, but I promise I did. I did professional communications for a while. We are looking at, for the city's push, maybe ten percent of the city's total population receiving an email. And of that, maybe one-third of that number opening the email. We are not going to be getting the sort of broad input that we would like to get out of these information sessions. We are going to get a handful of hyper-focused constituents who probably volunteer on city committees. And I think we've all volunteered on city committees before joining council, so that's great. But when we're talking about a substantial bond issue, we really want to get as many eyeballs on that and as many eyeballs on the reasons for that as early as possible. So, I would, I would argue that we actually launch the media coverage push ahead of the listening sessions as item number one in the communications calendar. And that we ask our city staff to develop a robust, multi-channel communication plan for these listening sessions so that we can get as many people as possible. When we discussed city communications at Public Works, the feedback that we got from the people who showed up, and by the way, we got a volunteer for the Public Works Committee out of those, out of that listening session. But the feedback we got was the city communication needs to be multi-channel because people don't see the emails. And actually, we, in that meeting, had someone say that he'd opened the email and didn't even see the information in the email. So, relying on that at an early stage is not going to yield you the sort of feedback that I assume everyone here wants as staff and as members of council. So, I just, I want us to rethink our communication calendar here. Sorry for talking so long.
I do appreciate that and your thoughtfulness. We do wanna make sure we're engaging with a broad swath of our public, so much appreciated. I know Schaefer, Alder Schaefer had his hand up. I see Alder Hanairo and Alder Crowe, so let's run that order.
Yeah, Charles, I agree with most of what you're talking about. Maybe you had a little confused on your point about the very first October number one as being a PR type of thing.
I don't think he meant October. I think he just meant, just to like notify of the events coming. May, maybe the timeline is-
Yeah, I guess maybe what I'm saying is, I'm hearing lots of comments about what has to come first and what has to come second. But if, I think the maritime, okay, so you get a radio call, it says SOS, that tells you something very specifically that somebody's in help and needs help. So, I think this developing the communication messages is not a sales job, it's an information job that we ought to be very clear on what we're doing before we start to get into minutia and details of how we're gonna do and what. But we have buildings that are crumbling, we need to do something about them. That kind of message. I don't think of that as a salesmanship kind of message. And I also would just say, I said this whole schedule seems to be about three months ahead of time. I mean, we're already at the end of October, so the idea of, I mean, this is just a hypothetical schedule.
Understood. And I think, I think that's a good place of you guys agreeing is that November is very soon. And I do appreciate that you shared, you know, we do have that broad message. I was thinking the same. So, I lose a lot of people's attention right before Thanksgiving, all the way until the new year. Because kids are either sick, or parents are leaving on vacation, or we get pulled to twelve things. So, right, and all the bus drivers have to buy for the bus drivers. So, I do appreciate that Alder Myers brought that up. Just as long as we're cognizant, because if people aren't really thinking about this, we're not catching them at a good time. So, as long as we're launching into that, and as long as as many people know, that makes me pretty happy. Alder Hanairo?
To get back to Brian's question, would the council like to pursue a November twenty-twenty-six decision point? I think that makes sense. I, I wonder, would that November decision be in time to incorporate it into the budget? Or would it be a completely separate action?
It depends on the decision that the council is ready to make in spring. For example, if you're, if you're saying, yes, I'm greenlighting a redo of all three buildings simultaneously, and you believe that it requires a referendum to do so, that would be, you know, the decision that's made in November. Depending on the outcome of that, I don't know what sort of, I mean, likely would have to be some budget amendments on the backend if that's, if that's where we go.
Okay, thank you for that. And then that, I noted what I think was intentionally vague wording about a November decision and not the wording a November referendum. And I think that is something, perhaps not tonight, but that is something this council needs to come back to. We, if we did do a referendum, it would be advisory only. And our colleagues in Sun Prairie, Windsor, and McFarland did not do a referendum for their projects. Granted, they were smaller. But that's just something to think about. Because as I mentioned at one of our committee of the whole meetings, if we decide we are going forward with a referendum, we need to be very clear on what our fallback position is if it doesn't pass. We've had two successful referenda in a row. I'd like to think we could keep that streak going. But I just wanna make sure that if we, if we go the route of a referendum, we have to have a Plan B for if, or one might say when voters reject the idea. The, I'll, I'll hold my comments about communication strategies for when we get to question number three, but I do have some on that.
Alder Crowe?
I would, I would definitely push for a November decision, November of next year. Obviously, our decision has to be before that, but that it would be something that we would go forward with next year. Again, I'm looking at, at costs. The longer we wait, the longer we sit here and debate about it, the more expensive it's gonna get. So, I would, I would definitely push for, as soon as we can get this rolling, the better. I think that the informational sessions, and the first one is in November, but there's also one in December and January. So, that, I think, there's not a lot of detail in the schedule. And I'm guessing behind the scenes, staff has talked about that, but there are, November, there's a launch social media, so I'm assuming that's some of the same information. The city's considering community campus. I know that Administrator Gatto has a sheet of information that Alder Lorman handed out to his constituents at his listening session. So, there's, I mean, we can be part of that communications thing off the bat. And the city has their website up with, with the information out there too. And I'm also assuming that our communications director will do more than just sending out city emails for communication. So, there'll be the social media, there'll be press releases, there'll be, you know, city emails too. So, I imagining it'll be a robust plan, and we can talk about that for question number three. But again, I would like to see this move forward as quickly as possible. I mean, we've been mauling it for quite a while, the council has. But we do need to get information out there, we do need to hear what constituents think. So, I think holding those listening sessions right away is good. Starting to get some communications out is good.
I, I, I hear you, and I'm going to, I, I don't disagree. I will say, though, that at the finance meeting two weeks ago, you brought up the climate, I don't call it the right thing, but it's basically the climate survey. And you said, should we pause to hear the results of that? And it is something I have been thinking about. So, if you see me pause, it's not to say all year. But if I say, you know, can we wait a few weeks? Can we wait a few months? I really do think that we need a thoughtful, before we just, I mean, we're already out there, and you're right, we've been talking for a while. But part of my thought is, I know we have to build a fire station to the north. We have to update our wells. There are things on our list that we don't think about because for the last five years, we've been talking about these three buildings. And it's not to say that this doesn't need to be done. But if I say, can we take a whole couple of weeks? It's because you reminded me, we have to think about, if we're bringing in an extra report, what is the outcome of that, and how do we weave that in properly and in a robust way? So, as you guys push me, I may push you back. But it's because I want the best outcome. So, I do wanna say thank you for saying that two weeks ago. Alder Nelson, and then Myers?
I basically, Alder Crowe really said a lot of what I wanted to say. I believe that it really is our job as alders, this is a big enough issue that we need to start having sessions with our constituents and really give them the background information that they need, like Alder Lorman did for his district. And let's not say if we wait, well, actually, I was gonna say, we should move on this because the dollars will change. If, it's like any bid you get for a job on your home, it has to stand for not very long because things change. So, if we wanna have data that we can give folks and it's real, we have to do it in a timely fashion. And then, my last point is that I am, I'm on board, I think, with moving the PR ahead, just to get everybody perked up about it.
Okay, Alder Myers?
I think Alder Kalish actually had his hand up before I did. Were you raising your hand?
Yeah.
My apologies.
No, I said, just to your original question about the timeline, I think that, you know, a November decision is appropriate, and thanks, thanks for putting this schedule together because we have to have a thoughtful, instructive timeline. One of the first questions we're gonna get is when is, when is a decision being made? Who's gonna make it? What's gonna be put, so, so, thank you. And I, I think that a year, you know, one year of public engagement, I think is appropriate in my mind.
Thank you. Alder Myers?
Yeah, so, I, the reason I, I said city email was because one of the things that came out during the Public Works discussion of city communications was that that is actually the city's primary method of engagement with people who live here. I wouldn't say it is the exclusive method of engagement, but it is so close as to be functionally that. In terms of eyeballs, if you look at the emails that Brent sends with his communications roundup every week, you'll see the social media engagement is pretty low. But we can discuss that more under point three. Sorry to jump the gun on that. But I also support a November timeline for this. But I support that with the caveat of, if we are raising people's taxes by some of the amounts that are under consideration, which in some of these plans, and our purpose for not going to referendum is we are afraid the referendum might fail, and we regard that as a very likely outcome, then we really ought to think about whether or not there are some things in the spending proposal that we could live without. Personally, I would be very uncomfortable bonding for this amount of money without a meaningful vote, even if it is purely advisory from the people who live here and who, like us, will be paying the increase in taxes.
Okay, next question.
So, staff has continued to work on building out what that, that strategy for engagement's gonna be on the materials that you've received. Give you, excuse me, some examples of that material. What we're just looking for tonight is, are there, is there anything additional beyond what you see here, beyond what's on our list, that you've heard from constituents that would be useful in connecting with them? We, you know, we'll run that down and incorporate that to the extent we can. But really, the purpose is to, you know, explain, explain the why for this project. Why are we talking about it? Why are we talking about it now? And then equip both council, staff, and members of the community with information on, you know, why, what's the purpose of this project? That's the point of this educational outreach, and to get feedback and provide it to residents in a manner that's easy to understand. That's kind of the main goals for the engagement going forward.
Sorry, I just, I'm looking at the community campus plan website now, and it seems like these information sessions are a little bit, they're not hypothetical information sessions. You have days and times down already, Brian.
Yeah, because we have to start planning for something, and it can always be changed, if that's the direction of the council, but.
You know, I, in the future, just for documentation, if you can put, if you have a specific date and time in mind, so that we're not all thinking hypothetically about when in November that might be, when in December, when in January. And I, I, I'm concerned about this timeline for this prior to a meaningful push.
And I think when I was talking before about November and pushing it back, it wasn't a decision, it was more just the start of the listening sessions. I do want them, okay, thank you. I, I really do want to hear from the people. But I just wanna make sure that we are actually hitting them when they're paying attention. So, I think that's what you were saying. Alder Hanairo, and then Alder Nelson? So, uh, I think that's what you were saying. Alder Hanairo and then Alder Nelson.
Thank you. Um, so the schedule, and, and I, I think it's fine to start. I totally understand the Thanksgiving issue, um, but I think it's fine to start with the public information or public listening sessions. Um, you know, maybe, maybe these are listening sessions that we hold this winter so that we can hear from people what their thoughts are and in the spring, it's more informational sessions to to explain where council is leaning at that time. I don't agree that we determined, um, that we, these would be unilateral, not bilateral, that we would just push information and not want to hear from constituents. We did not determine that. I would say though, we did say we weren't going to let the people vote at these information sessions, and I think um, Alder Myers cited the reason, well, you can expect to have a handful of hyper-focused residents show up at those meetings, so it wouldn't make sense, um, to ask for people to weigh in on a particular concept. Um, but we can certainly have listening sessions and they should be listening sessions. Questions I have are who will speak at the informational sessions? And what is accepted of or expected of us? And then also there's a reference to ongoing newsletter inserts, and I'm just wondering what, what's that?
Yeah, so to answer the second question first, so if there was any information that came out of those or any future council updates on the, the progress of the plan, that could be incorporated in the, the newsletter for updates for the community, um, specific to the the quote-unquote agenda for the information sessions. Uh, the idea is that we'd have a staff person there to kind of give a high-level overview of, again, the why. So why, why are we talking about this? And we'd, uh, you know, obviously be open invites all council members to attend. But specifically, do you invite the council member, uh, that represents the committee that's in that building? Um, so for example, the community, community on aging representative would, would likely, if they're available, uh, make sure that they attend the one at the senior center, uh, the library representative, we've asked them to attend the one at the library. And then Alder Nelson is council president, uh, for her to attend the one at city council or at city hall. But again, open invitation for all council members to attend, uh, and participate as your schedules allow.
Alder Myers, oh, Nelson and then Myers.
Um, my question is, when we're presenting this to our constituents, what can we tell them about the tax increment savings that is gonna be part of this that will take that sticker shot down?
Yeah, so I, again, I don't wanna give, throw in a number tonight without being able to verify, but I'll provide the council on.
It is something we can talk about once we have these solid numbers.
Yes, and, and to Alder Myers' point about the cost and the tax impacts of the various options that was discussed in August. That's information that, you know, obviously we will make sure is included upfront on the website and, you know, one of the first couple drop-down menus, so that it, you know, people are curious about that and we can say, based on what we know now, based on the concepts as they've been discussed today. Here's the cost, understand that those costs may shift and change as the size of the buildings, uh, are, are modified by the council and based on community feedback. Um, but the information that's been presented publicly to date on those costs, that's information that can be added to the website, yes.
Perfect, thank you.
Alder Myers?
So, um, Li- Lisa, um, because this, this was actually an exchange that you and I had during the Cal meeting about naming these. You said that if we weren't going to accept the certain, certain amounts of feedback, um, you'd be comfortable. And you'd actually support, um, calling them something other than listening sessions. I'm sorry, I don't have the timestamp handy, but that was a, that was an exchange between you and I in that meeting. And, uh, there, there were actually quite a few laughs at the we're not listening sessions, uh, remark. So I, I, I just do wanna correct that aspect of the record and there was, um, discussion among the alders who were here about changing the name. Brian Gaddow said that he would be changing the name to something else. He seemed to view it as a semantic point, but I do think it's important that you set expectations with the words that you use. And so if it's a listening session, it does actually need to be fully bilateral. And you do need to include things like a null option as a possibility. These are things we're not doing because we've taken them off the table. So I, I do think it's important that we change the name to information sessions. Because it does not, I mean, if, if you wanna reopen the door to giving full input to residents and take and changing the plans based on the feedback that we receive, that's I'm open to that, but that was not the discussion we had at the Cal meeting.
Thank you for that reminder. Alder Hanairo and then Alder Kalish.
I remember it differently. I do think we should name them appropriately. I recall the question was, would we be asking people if they wanna vote on an option? How many options should we present? Should be one, two, or the seven at the time? It, I'm, I'm not gonna belabor the point, but I do think asking people to provide their inputs such as, what do you think about a tax burden of X amount? I actually don't think it matters, the break that we're going to get per mil uh, for, for the closure of TID three, because all people are going to care about is what's the bottom line? I mean, we'd have to explain to them what TID three is and why the closure is going to save us eighteen cents per mil. What does that mean, right? So I, I don't think we even need to go there. I think we just need to have some numbers about how much is it going to cost? If people wanted to say something like, I would love to have, uh, a drive-up drop-off for books at the library. Why would we not want to get that information? So, so the issue, as I recall it, was about, do we ask people, here's your ballot, please let us know which option you prefer? And the answer, I think, is no. It's can still be called a listening session if we're seeking feedback. If we're presenting the options, just like when the zoning code was, uh, uh, in its draft form, we had information sessions to share with people, here's what is currently planned for the zoning code update. We still took information back from them, but it was an information push because we had to explain a lot of stuff in the zoning code. So I, I think the schedule is doable if we do need to change the date of that November nineteenth one, to put it after Thanksgiving. That seems fine.
Before Kalish speaks, um, I would, I, I, I appreciate what you're saying about not getting too complicated in the math. Uh, I would also like to highlight the fact that if the council, the prior councils had moved forward earlier, it would not have had that TIF release and there would be a financial impact immediately. So even though we don't wanna get overcomplicated, it does play in my mind as incredibly important because we have been very strategic. Because with the closure, we can now afford to do it and it feels seamless. And that is a difference, and that is to the wisdom of just pausing, even though at times it was uncomfortable. But we paused for a strategic reason. And for that reason, taxes did not jump up for those interim few years. Alder Kalish, then Alder Nelson, then Alder Crowe.
Well, yeah, and one of your questions was, you know, looking at the engagement schedule, if there are any thoughts or ideas, and just a couple of thoughts that I've integrated into public engagement opportunities in the past. And one is, you know, we, we might wanna consider, like at one of the first meeting, public meetings that we have, and I'm sure we'll show, we'll show the timeline, we'll show, you know, here, here's what we have planned for engagement opportunities and decision-making processes. We might just wanna ask them, you know, do you have any suggestions or ideas for other engagement opportunities that you might think might be helpful? We, we obviously can't accommodate everything, but, you know, maybe, maybe they have ideas that we're not thinking of and we could at least consider. Um, and then another thought I had, I'm sorry, if, if this has already been discussed, I couldn't make the August, uh, maybe the whole meeting, but you know, we've heard a lot of alders that, a lot of their thoughts and opinions about this issue have been founded in actually visiting some of these sites. And it's been very powerful, and so I don't know, I don't know if it's appropriate or, you know, but if we maybe just think about doing some onsite meetings. You know, it, 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 logistically, I don't know, if you have fifty or sixty. You know, you, you've heard a lot of alders say, when I saw it, it was like, holy cow, and I've seen some pictures that have been very powerful. I don't know if that'd be feasible or not, but just throwing it out there, if, if it's a potential option, people see things versus a picture on a screen. If they see it in person, it's like, holy cow, you know, something needs to be done. It's a couple of thoughts.
You know, I like that idea. It's always good for a slide, if nothing else, but a demonstration is always helpful. No, Alder Nelson, Alder Crowe.
Thank you. Um, I love that idea of a tour, and if we have a, a listening session or an information session at each building, that would be a nice addition to it. I, I, I'm not sure which point I wanna talk about next. Um, Alder Hanairo said something about, let's not complicate it. Um, are you thinking like, we talk about it, the bottom line being, it's a hundred million dollars, but the tax increment is gonna help us save fifty million on this project, so we give them a bottom line of fifty million?
No, my, my
Say the
We say here's
We say here's a hundred million
Impact of this project, so I'm looking at, um, the Cal presentation
Yeah.
That Bill gave, so, and even these slides are too, there's too much going on there. You know, the table and four different boxes. I would just focus on the, the maximum impact tax-wise is going to be four hundred and ninety-eight dollars per year for this project specifically.
Dollar per
The pink highlighted.
Household, okay. So, um, my other idea, and I hope this isn't too, uh, hard to accomplish. We have one of the most successful TIF districts in the history of Wisconsin. Why not do a TIF one O one? Public meeting here and get people informed about it and celebrate this huge win that we have. And then when we come to talk about this project, we say, look what this let us do. I'm just asking.
The challenge with the TIF district is, is it's designed to be a place for financial incentive. So the money's there for a developer, for a business, you know, it's
But it's to help us keep our taxes down ultimately.
No, a TIF district is, is for us to create zones of financial incentive and opportunity and growth and development. Just hear me out. We create a TIF district to build a community campus, it doesn't generate any revenue, it doesn't create any
We're legally not allowed to do that, so just squash that real quick. TIF cannot, to be clear, TIF cannot be used for any municipal facilities.
I, I, I think, I think she is, and, and I'm gonna try.
Put words in my mouth.
Thanks. Okay, I think what she's trying to say is as we are closing this out, and you're right, everything you said was
I understand that.
Almost like a closure celebration and then saying because we have this bountiful business, great atmosphere and economic engine, we are able to absorb this new project, much like we did in the past with the police and the fire station over time. But we can move forward with this project.
Yeah, I mean, that's why
Kind of like, uh, this is allowing us to do
That's why we don't need to overcomplicate it. What we're saying to the public, they understand this, hey, guess what? Right now the city has some debt it's carrying. Hey, but over time, that debt's gonna go down and, and with that, your taxes go down. But instead of your taxes going down, we just wanna take on some more debt and build a community campus. The end.
Refresh the library.
I mean, how difficult
Opportunities for senior center.
People understand that, that's
But let's not assume they're as dumb as I am about TIF. Let's just help them understand it and so that they can go, wow, we live in this place, the financial director is so freaking awesome.
Yes, that's very true.
That we pay less in taxes than a lot of the city directors.
Well, we work hard to be fiscally responsible as a city.
Good vibe up there and then this project.
We could probably do that a little bit with our branding. I like it. And education is always good. I will support that. Uh, also, can you get an amen for the fiscal responsibility? Maybe not actually amen, but you know, the, the bravos.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it's gonna be difficult for us to sell our constituents on being fiscally responsible with money and how we wanna use it. And as, uh, Alder and I will already said, you know, we don't have to dive into those details in this project. It's a bottom line. You know, we wanna do this and this is going to be the impact on your taxes. And, um, and we're already formulating a a rationale on how we can do it, where, you know, we're paying down our debt, great, well, now we'll just take on more debt. It's different debt, we're paying down TIF, TIF district, but we're gonna take on debt for a community campus elsewhere. So it's two different mechanisms. Fine, they don't care. What they care about is the next time we need to have financial opportunity in the city, where we need to create another TIF district, maybe in the business park or somewhere in the city, like we recently did. Are we gonna do that again to keep a business and create economic growth and development in the city? Two very different things.
All right, very robust. Crowe and then Myers, and thank you.
I had a couple of comments. One was going back to, I mean, people, again, upon the amounts and what financial information we, we give, I think Alder Nelson's right, and I think what Alder Hanairo said was on the same track. They want, constituents wanna know the bottom line on their tax bill. They don't necessarily wanna get into the debate on to what a TIF is and what does it do.
Correct.
We can give a broad overview if necessary, but what's this gonna cost me? I'm gonna jump into the semantics debate. I was an English major, so word meanings are very important to me, whether it's information or listening. The other thing I know from doing lots of reading and some writing is that words have different meanings to different people. So we could say it's a listening session and that means the council sits and listens to constituents. Or it could mean that we tell them everything and they listen to us. So calling in a listening session doesn't necessarily say what we want. Information session works the same way. I could say, uh, think of it as, I wanna get information from constituents to know what they want. So I'm gonna sit here and let them give me information about the community campus. Or it could be, we wanna give them information about all the work that's been done about the community campus. Neither of those words are real precise as to what we're doing in these sessions. Maybe it's a conversation opportunity where we can talk to each other. What are their questions? How do we answer those questions? What kind of information do we wanna give them so they can have a, a better understanding of what's going on? What do we wanna hear from them? Give you the third option of what to call sessions.
Thank you. Thank you for those semantics. I can keep learning. Alder Myers?
So, uh, Alder Crowe, um, I was a philosophy major. We can go very deep on the meaning of words if you want to.
I was a minor in philosophy.
Yeah, we, yeah, let's, let's, let's
Let's save that for another time.
Yeah, let's, let's do that, let's do that after. But I, I do think that listening does imply more of a, more of a conversation than it sounded to me like we intended to have at the Cal meeting. And if members of this body would prefer to have it be more of a conversation where there's more resident input, I am very, very strongly in favor of that, as you're aware. Um, but to move back to why I raised my hand, um, I think that by rope, and this, this was why I asked, uh, Brian for the number earlier. The nu- the thing that our, our residents here are going to care about more than anything else is the number on their tax bill.
Yeah.
And that that's, that's it. That's, that's what they're gonna care about. And that was the motivating factor for a lot of decisions that we've discussed tonight. So, and I'm sorry, uh, Mayor Kuhn, your crinkling is getting picked up by the microphone.
I'm very sorry.
Um. I don't necessarily think it's a good idea for us. To get into a long. The TIF allowed us. To do this discussion with residents because. It didn't allow us to do this. It was a productive use of debt. It is allowing us to build affordable housing. That is why we've extended it. And it allowed us to develop parts of the city and add to, and add to the tax roll. The fact that we can do this. Uh, and potentially have the costs equal the amount that. People will have their taxes go down as we close the TIF district. Is a wonderful thing, and we should be happy about that. Um. But we, we should, separate from all of this, um, to uh, Alder Nelson's point. Uh, do a better job communicating to residents. Um, what the city's uh. Fiscal prudence uh, has allowed us to achieve. Because. The perception. Uh, in my district is that the city is not particularly prudent with its resources. Uh, I remember vividly a constituent of mine telling me his car had three hundred thousand miles on it, and he was proud of that because he was gonna put another hundred thousand on it. And he said he wanted the city to make more of those decisions. City Hall has about five hundred thousand miles on it in car terms. It's ready for the junkyard. I, I think we all fundamentally agree on that point. But um. If we start conflating. The TIF for purposes other than what it is in fact used for and was in fact used for and could even legally be used for. With the community campus project, we're just gonna start confusing people. So I'd want those. Uh, communications to be separate from this.
Very good. Um, I think that's what we were uh. Thinking back uh, before, but appreciate that you support that.
Just once, I'm, I'm a musician, so I don't pay attention to uh, semantics, but I just want to say, I also want to listen to what people have to say, and I think that's critically important. And no matter what we listed as, I want that to happen. So.
Very good. I, I totally agree. Alder Kalish.
Yeah, I'm sorry. It sounded like this discussion, this, this discussion was had the last meeting, but I just wanted to mention, so I. I've attended convened hundreds, if not thousands of public meetings in my career, twenty year career. And it, it sounds like there was a discussion about whether or not we should allow people to convey their opinions in a vote. A- a- and I, I don't know what that discussion was, but, but in my opinion, I would strongly encourage against that. These are not, these are not, these are not voting meetings. These are meetings that we're convening a conversation. I think our primary goal. Is to engage as many people in this city that are interested in this topic through as many diverse places and sources as we possibly can. Um, when you, when you convene voting, you know, that's a whole different way of gathering opinion. And I, I don't think that's what we're. Thinking about. So I, I don't know what the, sorry, I missed a discussion. I guess maybe the, everybody's look good with it. But like I said, I. In the literally thousands of public meetings I've ever convened, we never vote. It's a conversation. It's. When, when, when you, when you frame it as you're gonna come to vote, it's an entirely different conversation. And in some cases, it's not a conversation at all. I just want to come here and write something down. So that I would encourage that we don't, you know, go in that direction.
I like it when we have experts on the panel. So much appreciated for your thousands of experiences.
I just want to follow up with uh, Alder College. So in that. Theme, I, I totally agree with you. Um, I think Alder and Iroh said that too. Um. But what do you feel about this going to referendum? Because again, we're trying to. Get this accomplished. I'm just curious.
I know, yeah.
Being the expert.
Yeah, so. In my other job, there's one point three million constituents. And so we. We, we, we do surveys, you know, so we, we, we typically don't. We, we never have. And in all the jobs I've ever had in every state in, in my profession. We have never done a vote of every single, we, we, we try to engage as many diverse people as we possibly can. That's n- to say nothing wrong with the referendum whatsoever. That's, that's an, that's a way of gathering community input. But. What, what, we, what I've found is that more engaged community input, more valuable community input. In, in, in a lot of cases is when you have the conversations versus the. Talk with people and do, you know, um, tours like we were talking about before, and you know, really, really try to get into the issue.
Thanks.
All right, so um, as for the referendum, can we just go over if, if we were to go to it? Are you thinking in April or next November?
So I, I don't think that it would make sense to schedule it um, in November. Um. Unless we're pushing. Our own timeline ahead of November. Because the first time we could meet would be. The night.
No, no, I'm sorry. I meant April of twenty six or November of twenty six. I'm trying to understand the timeline.
We would not be ready for an April question.
No.
Okay, that was my assumption, but I want to make sure I understand and the body understands.
Council would make our decision. On whether or not to go to referendum in November, and we would gear up for in April. I don't think he said in November, he said by November. April twenty seven, not twenty six.
Yeah.
Oh, April of twenty seven?
Yeah.
Is that what you're thinking?
No, I mean, I think the option that the, the schedule we put together would be if the council decided that you wanted to do a referendum question, the referendum could be held in November of twenty six. Um, I, again, the, the decision. What the options are, all that stuff would be done, you know, beginning of next year into next spring, you could make that decision. And then host the referendum in November, if that's what you wanted to do. If the council chooses to, to do an April twenty seven referendum, that, that's your choice. But the schedule that we've laid out here is for November twenty six. If that's the direction you want to go.
Yeah, so sorry, I thought that you were, that the November twenty six was uh, the, the council decision, but I, I would be comfortable with uh, November. Twenty six with council having our decision finalized in um, on whether or not to go to it. Uh, at the uh. Public input to uh, common council, so we. Do that in the summer.
All right, uh, Alder Lorman.
Yeah, I, I think um. The idea of going to referendum is where we're gonna have to test the waters with, with the constituents, not. Getting their vote on it, not getting a vote to have a vote to have a referendum, but you know, really be a listening session because. Um. You know, referendum was easy to sell with uh, our, our, our water resource utility and stormwater because. They already were paying the higher rate because the rate was already put in place from the flood. And. Everybody wants the water to their, delivered to their house and it, you know, so I think some things are very easy to sell. And I think as we get to that point, we'll, we'll have a good sense of. Uh, the success of a referendum, because to think about it, we. We're convinced that the campus is a good idea. Now we go to our constituents with a referendum and it gets shot down. Potentially, and it could be for things way out of our control, like something else going on economically, politically, who knows what? Um, that. Gives them just a bad feel where I think as we continue to look at what our capacity to simply carry more debt is. Um, and, and do this without a referendum maybe. Um, so. I think we should use that. Tool carefully. I'm not saying no, I'm just saying, think about it before we just dive into a referendum with the risk of.
Understood. I think I was just trying to understand the timeline because I was worried that if we're doing listening sessions for April. That is a very quick turnaround.
I don't know.
For November, it's a good, you know, moving forward. So just making sure I understand. I saw Alder Schaeff, no, I'm sorry, Schaefer and Crowe. Okay, thanks, guys.
Yeah, I just want to concur with, with Alder Lorman a bit. You know, all my years of being a dean, fifteen years, I learned that. You have to listen to the people that you're in charge of. And if you listen enough, you'll find that more than. Half of the people will agree with you on those issues and you can comfortably move forward. Without having the fear that they're gonna slam down on you. So to me, the issue of a. Uh, referendum is simply means we haven't listened well enough, or we're not willing to change our plans enough. To sort of make sure that what we're doing is actually what the majority of the people want us to do. So I agree with you. I think we should wait and ideally not do.
Going back to Brian's original question number three.
Thank you.
Um, about other communications, um. Reaching out to Middleton businesses, um, I, I think that, I mean, in the. Timeline and discussion. Um, I think it's important that there's a concerted effort to reach out to businesses as well. Um. Economic impact of having a new campus, new library downtown, what that brings to downtown businesses. Um. I don't know the legalities of looking for donations from businesses. There may be some businesses that are willing to. Make a donation, um, working with the Middleton. Um. Development Commission. Different off, just getting the message out to them as well, not just to residents.
Yep, punching.
Part of our communication.
Thank you. Alder Myers.
Yeah, I, I support uh, Alder Crowe's um, suggestion of. Exploring the legality of uh. Privately financed um, portions of this project uh. And accepting donations if uh, there is a legal mechanism to do so. When the landmarks commission revised our ordinance, we actually made it possible for the construction of landmarks to be privately financed. Because the landmarks commission's budget is a thousand dollars a year. And those uh, landmarks, some of them, just the plaques uh, will. Run you up uh, above that number. So uh, it is a, it is a valid way to reduce costs. Um. In that area, and Matt would have a better idea if it's. A viable option here legally. Um, the other question, though, Randall, is uh, staff time. Um. Do we anticipate more in donations than the amount of staff? Time expended in raising them, because if, if we don't, we've just wasted money.
Is it, is it staff going out or is it other people?
You guys have to be very careful.
Dive into this legal rabbit hole, but the staff would not be the ones soliciting.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
A very fine bright line on that.
Yeah.
Staff cannot be involved in that.
Staff, yeah, okay, good.
Thank you, city administrator.
I only play attorney on TV.
Okay, so I think we've done well enough. If this is where we got with the communications plan, I think we've run every.
Yeah, I've got sufficient uh, feedback from you now. If we have additional questions uh, or things to come back, we'll obviously. Um, schedule another time to discuss, but this is, thank you for your feedback tonight. Uh, more to come uh, on this as we go along.
Okay, and uh, you had said initially if there was any motions.
Yeah, I, I didn't get the sense that there was uh, clussing around motions, so if there's none, that's fine.
Um, I would like to move that we set the range uh, for our budget to be from seventy million to one ten.
Is there a second?
Says Alder Crowe, I'll second that.
Any comments?
Just a clarification, did you say seven or seventy?
Seventy.
Seventy.
Alder and Iroh.
Um, point of order, I guess. It says on our agenda, update and discussion on community campus plan. Does that mean? I mean, this is not a decision.
Right, I mean, this is more of a sentiment of the council.
Sentiment of the council.
Unless the city attorney thinks differently.
No, I mean, at the end of the day, this vote is not gonna end up controlling exactly what this costs anyway. So yeah, I think this. This is merely a vote of the sentiment of the council. I don't think it's out on order of the agenda.
Thank you. Alder Myers.
Long as it's la- language that way, sentiment of the council, our direction to staff, information, purposes, something like that.
Alder Myers.
Um, I would move that we set the range as the. Amounts uh, that would come off of the average tax bill. Um. Plus or minus fifteen percent.
Are you proposing a?
Be a substitute amendment.
Yeah, that would be a substitute. Yeah.
Sorry, substitute motion.
Is there a second to? His motion?
Lorman will second that.
Okay.
Cause I want to learn more about it.
And is there any comments?
Maybe we can do it.
What, and what are, what are these dollar amounts?
It's not a number I can give you.
Right, yeah, that's why I'm that.
I.
I feel like since we don't have a crucial piece of information, it would be hard to vote in favor of that.
From, from my recollection of past meetings, that would have put us somewhere in the seventy million dollar range.
Just what I said.
No, you said that as your low bound, Katie.
That's right.
Your upper bound is significantly above that.
All right, hold on. So he said plus or minus fifteen percent?
Sure.
Can you help me with math?
Yeah, but I, I get it. Yeah.
I'm, I'm going to make a substitute motion, Madam Chair.
All right.
Substitute.
Hold up. I did, I, yes, I will, just a second. Can we just talk in the same numbers? Yeah, so, just give me a second. Ten, it's ten, it's eighty. Seven.
Eighty, ninety-five.
So you're looking at sixty-nine and a half to eighty and a half millions. Just for the fifteen percent ran uh, awareness. Thank you for giving me that chance to do the math.
Bad, it's close to.
It's, it's within range. It's a smaller scope. That's where that is. Uh, and you had a substitute to his.
No, I do not. I will just comment, I'm going to vote against both of these um. Both, both of these motions, because I, I feel like. Alder College uh, noted the potential hazard of setting a lower limit. Um, I know this is a range, but I, I, I feel like the staff has gotten plenty of direction from all of us. Um, I'm not able to commit to anything higher than a hundred million. Um, yeah, I, I'm just going to vote no on both at this time.
All right, so let's start with, oh, I'm sorry.
I concur with Alder and Iroh a hundred percent. I'll do the same.
Change my opinion.
Yeah.
Uh.
I will withdraw my substitute motion. It does not have the votes to pass.
Well, it's been seconded, so you can.
Yes, it belongs to the body.
Yeah.
Uh, city administrator, can you assess me?
It's correct. Uh, it's been moved in second, so it's a article of the body now. So we do need to take a vote on this substitute motion. Uh, it would be the amount of the tack, tack occurrence finance savings plus fifteen percent. Ballpark numbers would be sixty-nine point five million to approximately eighty point five million would be the. Upper, the lower and upper range.
And I'm gonna ask for a roll call vote. Uh, all those in favor of approving that motion?
So roll call vote, I have to call the names individually, if that's what we're gonna do.
Please do.
Schaefer.
No.
Kalish.
No.
Mayor, I'm sorry, uh, Nelson.
No.
Myers?
No.
Lorman?
No.
Did you skip Aniro?
He did.
Oh, sorry. This, this writing, I wasn't looking up. Alder and Iroh.
No.
Alder Crowe.
No.
Okay, so that substitute amendment fails unanimously.
Right.
Okay, back to the original.
So that, the original motion was a lower bound of seventy million and an upper bound of a hundred and ten million. And again, just. This, uh, the way it was phrased, it's, it's a sentiment of the council. It's not. You know, hard set in stone number, because again, that's gonna depend on how options shift and change.
And I'm gonna ask for a roll call vote again.
Schaefer.
No.
Kalish.
No.
Nelson.
Yes.
Myers.
No.
Uh, Aniro.
No.
Lorman.
No.
Crowe.
Yes.
Okay, that fails two to six.
Two to five.
Five to five.
We're missing.
We're missing.
I would offer an amendment of a, or excuse me, I would offer an upper bound of eighty million dollars. For consideration with no lower bound.
Is there a second?
I'll withdraw it if we just don't wanna come to a number.
Uh, there is no motion, no second. It fails. So, uh, thank you. Um, do you need any help with the timeline? Alright, in doing that, I think our final item is updates on committees, commissions and boards. By council members and mayor. Any updates, Alder Heniro?
Just two that are time sensitive. First of all, on Thursday at six thirty at the library, there's going to be a panel on housing. It's hosted by the library and I encourage everybody to attend. And then also next Tuesday, um, October twenty eighth, there will be a public hearing for the Imperial rezoning request. This is the um ten story and six story buildings that are proposed to replace the um Imperial Gardens restaurant. Which has generated a lot of interest from constituents who are heartbroken about not having that restaurant. Um, potentially not having that restaurant in their future. So I just mentioned that in case uh members want to attend the planning commission meeting. That hearing would, will start at seven o'clock.
And the developer promises that it will stay there. Uh, previously it was a few uh buildings over. So if anyone's watching this for the first time and they think that that is potential, they are hoping to keep it there. That is the, the final I've heard. Uh, I can change. Uh, yes, Alder Myers.
So um I have updates on behalf of landmarks, uh, public work and public works. Um, the landmarks commission uh will now be considering. The form for alteration of landmarks at our upcoming meeting. If you own a historic property. Uh, please attend that because um your input, uh, now that we have the revised ordinance in place. Is going to determine uh a lot of what that commission decides with the form. Uh, since we are concerned about making sure that the process is as transparent. And easy for the owners of historic properties to understand as possible. Uh, so that's landmarks um second uh for public works. Public Works met jointly with the Ped Bike and Transit Committee uh this past week. During that meeting, we adopted a uh. Um, complete streets uh within construction zones policy. Or during construction policy, uh, including uh. Direction for staff to develop a safe crossing uh guideline for marking because there is. Uh, ambiguity um within the complete streets policy. Um, concerning that. Also, uh, we did take staff's feedback. That in terms of enforcement mechanism with both city contractors and with others doing work in the city. The city ordinances would need revision. I'd really encourage um. Matt uh to reach out to um Luke and Ben and our, our planning staff. Um, who uh are. Much more conversant in the specific details of that than I am. Uh, since it is something that I would uh like to put on a future agenda of the license and ordinance. Committee in order to ensure that our city lives up to the complete streets policy that this body adopted. And uh in terms of the uh, well. Uh, I'll, I'll stop there. The joint meeting was pretty long and involved, but there are some great maps. If anybody in the city wants to see them, planning department has custody of them. Oh, and actually, excuse me, one last item. Uh, I would encourage members of this body to tour the um. The wells uh with our water utility so that you understand why the capital costs are what they are.
Just, can you repeat the date of the landmark meeting?
Uh, the landmarks commission meeting, I'm sorry, I did not give that date. Um, is on Thursday at six fifteen P M.
This Thursday.
This Thursday, uh, the twenty third at six fifteen P M. Thank you, Alder Schaefer. Uh, it's in conference room C usually.
Uh, Alder Lorman.
Yeah, um Airport Commission um had our meeting this month. Probably had something to do with a letter you might have received in your email today. Um, and we have a standing agenda item where we discuss um the challenges and. Place of uh unleaded fuel development. So. No motion or decision was made by the commission. This is just an ongoing discussion so we can just figure out how to deal with it. But we reviewed the um, on that um item, the challenges in obtaining a viable unleaded. Um, solution at the airport. And what we're simply faced with is the liability insurance with it. And we won't get into it here with discussion. We can certainly have a more in-depth discussion at the future airport commission meeting. With the guidance of the city. But it comes down to liability insurance and what is currently being purchased and distributed at the airport. And what that distributor will ensure for us to simply sell and make available to aircraft. And right now, um, with the current F B O and their contract with their current fuel distributor. Um, unleaded fuel is not available to them. And they therefore will not provide any liability insurance. So. We can't sell something that we can't uh be liable for unless the city wants to go into the business of uh buying. And then distributing fuel. So like I said, this is something that we will always have as a discussion. So if we can find a solution, um, we simply will. There isn't anybody who's pushing back on this. It's just, we can't sell what we don't. Have, which we can't get at. A profitable price and ensure it. Because if it goes in an airplane and airplane falls out of the sky, who is responsible for it? So you have to have insurance. And that's it.
Thank you for sharing that insight. Alder Myers?
Uh, just one other note for uh the airport commission uh for my colleagues who. Would like to learn more about uh the uh airport. Its income uh and the income derived from. Uh, comparable uh goods and services provided by like airports throughout Wisconsin. There was a report um in the uh last airport commission agenda detailing all of that information. I believe Brian could send it to all of us. Uh, I encourage you to read through that report. It will help you. Understand the uh revenue possibilities that are open to the airport at present, the cost of the fuel. What the regional price for that fuel is and um. As well as uh other sources for the airport. So I encourage you to read that. It's not too long.
Uh, thank you. And uh, I'm just gonna share that last night I met with the joint. C D A and workforce housing. It was so great to see a few of you in the room. Uh, I presented uh from my mayor's speech back in uh July at the National Mayor's Conference. Uh, I presented that to the two committees and shared best practices that I shared with mayors. Um, the reason that I share that is that you guys as a council and as a city staff as a whole are doing great things. And we are sharing best practices with other cities, even ones much larger than us, but also ones that are smaller. It is that good neighbor philosophy and uh we are streamlining processes and we're getting housing built and adding supply. But also up and down uh with options. Uh, so that's something to be very proud of. Uh, so another thing we could start sharing with our public. Um, also last week, I talked to uh the fire chiefs across the state. About A I adoption techniques and a way to get a workforce uh to embrace them. So if anybody has a committee that is considering a tech adoption and you'd like to hear more. Uh, since I didn't share my housing from a few months ago until last night, I should be more forthright. And uh, it was well received and some of the chiefs actually wrote me uh just this week to say they put it in action. And they're very happy with our outcome. And that is my update. And with that, we are.